It's been a very steep learning curve. I attended Board of Education meetings off and on for probably 10 years. So I did have a decent feel for what happens at board meetings, what they talk about, what's important, what the priorities are, where the strategic plan is, all of that. What I did not know was everything that goes on behind the scenes that we don't see as just public observers. So there's a lot that goes on in an executive session, everything that has to do with personnel, real estate, every legal issue, all of that. Obviously, I never would have had, you know, an opportunity to be in on that till I was sworn in. So that's a lot. And then the requests and emails and all from constituents, I knew that would happen, but I didn't, you know, I couldn't really predict how that was going to be, how the ebb and flow of people being engaged, not engaged, and that kind of thing. So it's been quite a learning experience for this first year, but I do feel like I have a better grasp this second year. It took a year to sort of feel like I've got my legs under me, and now I think I'm going to be OK. It varies dramatically. So, I mean, there will be weeks that go by where I, probably no calls and maybe just a handful, like two to five emails on something. And a lot of times, the emails might be an invitation, or, you know, they're not necessarily people angry about something. Then when something like redistricting happens, I mean, there could be, I mean, there could be one day where, I don't know, probably the most might be 30 to 50 in a day, when people get really fired up. They'll, like, if a school sends out a blast to their community and says, "Everybody write to the board and tell them this is what we want," then there'll be a whole string from various people in that community that are all fired up about a specific topic. So it just varies. There's no real rhyme or reason to it, other than just what the hot topics are. I've sort of had to come to my own sort of decision about how to handle that. And what I've come to is, if the person writes directly to me and it's addressed to me individually, then I will always write back, probably within 48 hours, I'll write back. If they address it to the full board or to me and the superintendent, I either won't write back, I'll just leave that to either the board chair or the superintendent to choose how to respond, or sometimes I'll respond just with the acknowledgement that I received the email, but not necessarily have to, you know, give a full response the way the superintendent would on some, on a management-type issue. Part of it is dependent on the issue as well, because if it's a management issue, something related to, for example, personnel, like if parents are upset about something that's happening at their school related to a teacher or administrator, that's actually not in the board's purview. Our only employee is the superintendent. So if there's a concern about the superintendent, that's in our purview. If there's a concern about any employee below the superintendent, so any chief, a regional superintendent, principal, teacher, that's not in our purview. So usually, when I say just write back acknowledging, I would have to write back and say, you know, "Thank you for your email, appreciate your input, this isn't in the board's purview, but I'll make sure the superintendent knows about your concern." And that's really all we can do on those types of issues. But for redistricting, I was, you know, responding, "Keep the input coming, you know, this is something that the regional, the interim superintendent is working on, be sure to attend the community input meetings, be sure to fill out the online surveys, let them know, and sort of direct them how to give their input appropriately throughout that process." So, kind of depends on the issue. Wow, that's a good question, because I think part of what makes the board, you know, function in a way that's kind of, I guess, a more comprehensive way is that everybody sort of came to their board positions in a different way. Like, most people had some education advocacy, but, you know, some might have, like, run a private school, and somebody might have been involved in communications at a company, and somebody might be a professor. So, so they sort of have different backgrounds and different ways that they were brought into education. My background is in education. I was a school psychologist for Gwinnett County Public Schools for several years, so that's unique. I'm unique in that I've spent a lot of time in public schools. And then I also raised kids, and I'm still raising kids, in DeKalb County Public Schools. So I have that, which I do think is helpful, to have that experience as a parent. And a lot of the DeKalb Board, I'd say, everyone on the DeKalb Board right now has at some point had a student in the DeKalb School District. That's helpful. And then the bonus for me was that, yes, I did spend a lot of years as an education advocate in leadership roles, which actually introduced me to Tucker in a different way. I had been at Tucker, in Tucker Rec, actually, multiple times when my kids were little for programs in Tucker, and had gone to events in downtown Tucker, and was certainly aware and engaged in Tucker. But in my education advocacy, I was involved with, at the time, the Tucker Parent Council. And I was co-president of the Emory La Vista Parent Council, and we worked together a lot. So I was in Tucker schools in that capacity. So I was fortunate, when I came on the board, I did have a history of actually physically being in Tucker schools and advocating for Tucker schools before I ever was a board member. So, yeah, we all came to it in different ways. I like the way I came to it, because it, you know, it gives me sort of a depth to my understanding of education issues locally, so, but everybody comes at it different ways. The clusters, historically, they did not have much communication vertically. So elementary schools didn't necessarily know what the middle school was doing, or what the high school was doing, and vice versa. So just for communication purposes, it's nice to have leaders from the whole vertical alignment in one room, so everybody knows what's going on, just events and exciting news in the cluster. But what's also come from it in these cluster models is a prioritization of advocacy. So, like, Lakeside and Tucker both did a SWOT analysis that was a cluster-wide SWOT analysis, and so, and then sort of made some prioritizations based on that. So each school would have their concerns, and the example, which is a true example in both clusters, is building maintenance, deferred maintenance issues in the schools would pop up with every school pretty much, so it would be at the top of the list for the cluster SWOT analysis. And then the cluster could advocate on that issue, which impacts every school pretty much in the cluster. And that was, that's an added benefit, because there's just, there's power in those numbers. And even since I've come on the board, the issues that have bubbled up for the Tucker cluster as a whole and the Lakeside cluster as a whole have influenced me, because it is powerful to be able to say, "This is a concern for the entire cluster. This is not one classroom in one school where the heat's not working. This is a concern almost every school has had some type of heating or air conditioning issue. It's something that we need to pay attention to." So that, that cluster collaboration has been awesome. And it basically put the Tucker Parent Council out of business, which is a positive thing. I mean, they were ready to have new leaders come and advocate for the Tucker schools. And my hope is that these, the cluster councils will start collaborating more as a region. So Druid Hills also has a cluster council, and the hope is that Druid Hills, Lakeside, and Tucker's cluster councils will start a regional collaboration. And that will put the Emory La Vista Parent Council out of, out of business, because there won't be a need for regional parent councils anymore, because the cluster councils will take on that advocacy. And then, just to take it a step further, there's a, there's a Parent Councils United that includes the executive board members of all the regional parent councils. That should go out of business at some point, because the regional people from each cluster will start building the bridges and advocating with their comrades in the other regions and develop some new kind of systematic, it might still be called Parent Councils United, who knows, but just sort of a more systematic way of information funneling from the district through the region to the clusters and back up. So that's kind of a long-term goal, I think, for the grassroots advocacy efforts that are going on now. So we'll see. Hopefully, that's the direction it'll go. Oh, there's a lot, and the problem is, we don't tell our story about what all is going on, but we go, our school board members have to do a certain amount of training, and some of that is done at conferences. And it is very interesting to go to conferences and hear what the, what the cutting-edge issues are and see that we're, we're already on it. For example, equity in education. So equity is a big focus. There are a lot of seminars and workshops that go on in Atlanta and throughout the country, where the focus is on educational equity. And what that means is, instead of every school or student getting equal resources, it's based on need. So the students who don't have as much need actually may get fewer resources than students who have greater need. They may get more resources in the form of, it could be anything, programs, it could be wraparound services, it could be, we're getting ready to have medical centers in our schools, it could be access to that. But all kinds of resources are distributed based on equity, not equality. That's kind of what's been going on. DeKalb has been doing that a long time. We're actually a model for some of our programs. One is our Family Impact Hub that's housed at the, at the headquarters on Mountain Industrial. It's, it's an amazing resource for our entire county. They actually, they're offering GED classes, so that parents are getting an education alongside their students. And there's more and more research coming out that parents being educated and valuing education has a profound impact on their students, and that our, the students actually achieve better just knowing that their parents are improving themselves academically. It's very powerful. There's also this, there's a two-gen, this is another buzzword, a two-gen approach. It's a two-generation approach that's gaining traction across the country in education circles and in education policy. There's a push to focus on both generations, healthcare, mental health, education, juvenile justice, for both generations. We still have a long way to go, but we're ahead of the game on that, too. We've, we already have parent resource centers throughout our district, where we basically, we weren't calling it a two-gen approach, because that wasn't the buzzword when it started. It was called family engagement when it started, but that's what we're doing. We're trying to meet the needs of the parents, because when they have access to resources and they're getting their needs met, the kids perform better. The academic achievement just skyrockets when the families are being taken care of. So I'd say that's a huge, huge one, where we are, we are ahead of the curve on addressing those. And then we also have lots of programs in our districts. Our career technology programs are amazing. We don't tout those enough, and we'll hear in the media, "Our school districts aren't valuing the trades, and, and we don't have enough plumbers and electricians, and why aren't the schools doing something like that?" Something about that, and we are, and we have been for a long time. It's just, we haven't done a great job promoting it. But we do, all across our country, again, like, all of our high schools have career technology programs in them, and we have centers in the north part of DeKalb and the south part of DeKalb, where kids come from all over to get additional career technology opportunities that may not be offered in their home schools. So we are, we are producing students who, for example, Cross Keys houses the Career Technology North Center. And last spring, in May, I attended a signing where businesses throughout Atlanta were there onsite to literally physically sign the kids with their, with their credentials to go into the field and work for them on the spot. They were getting jobs and going into the workforce, because they have the credential they need coming out of our career tech program to go work immediately. And it was really exciting, and the kids, the kids were excited, excited, the employers were excited. They, they thought that it was a better way to populate the positions that they have in their, in their organizations, rather than going and, you know, putting out, having to go, you know, tread the pavement and go find people. They know they're excellent, prepared students. We, we were able to get ahead of the game in our superintendent search, because thankfully, our previous superintendent, Steve Green, told us early he did not want to renew his contract at the end of this school year. So we already knew we were going to have a superintendent search. So we were able to get the, the wheel rolling on that search and hire a search firm relatively early compared to the other districts, like Atlanta is also on the brink of a search. We were ahead of them and some other districts that are currently looking. So our superintendent search firm has actually already done community input and gone all around our district to speak with residents about what they want to see in our next superintendent. They also held focus groups, where they would take, like, business leaders, for example, and they would invite the Chamber of Commerce, or elected officials, and they would invite the DeKalb delegation, or, you know, groups, focus groups, where they would ask what they wanted in the next superintendent. They spoke with board members individually about what we want in the next superintendent. Then they put all that information together in a report and gave it to us. They also used it to develop a profile that they put out with the application, so that the people interested would know exactly what our community is looking for. And we ended up receiving 68 applications by the cutoff. Apparently, there were some that wanted to apply even after the cutoff, but they, our search firm had already told us they're very firm on their cutoffs, so those extra people were not able to apply. But 68 is higher than the number that they usually get in a superintendent search. And they said, there are a few reasons for that. I mean, number one is, DeKalb actually does have a good reputation nationally for a lot of the programs and innovative steps that we've taken in a lot of areas. Another reason is that people like Atlanta, and there were a lot of people who voiced interest in the job, because they might say, "Oh, my grandchild lives there, my child lives there, and it would be great to be closer to them." And so, so that's, that's a factor. And then another reason is confidentiality. Our, our policies are somewhat unique, what I've learned, are unique in terms of the way districts across the country do it, because we are allowed to keep the identity of all the candidates confidential up until the last minute. And then we do have a period where we have to release a name, but it can be one. We're not required to release three names. And superintendent candidates like that, because a lot of them are in administrative roles in other districts, where they don't want their boards, or if they're not a superintendent, their superintendents to know they're looking until they actually have the job. So that got us a lot of interest, because we have a very confidential process. So the people were from 20 different states. It was a great group. Our superintendent search firm was very pleased, the board was pleased. And we're hoping, our timeline, which is online, has us interviewing in February. So we're hoping to interview our top candidates in February, which is coming soon. So we're really excited about that. I mean, I would say that my thoughts are in sync with generally what the community said, and I find it fascinating, because I was also involved in a different way following the superintendent search five years ago. And five years ago, the community input was saying, "We need someone who can turn around low-performing schools. We need someone who's very academically focused, who has a background in curriculum." Those were the, and I agreed with that at the time, because our interim and then full superintendent, Michael Thurmond, didn't have an education background, and he was brought in for a specific purpose of sort of riding the ship and getting us going in the right direction. And then it was time to bring in somebody with an academic focus, and that's what happened. What's interesting now is that that's not what people or I am as focused on right now. It's not that that's not as important it is, but it's that we had that for five years. That was, that was Dr. Green's background, curriculum development, turning around low-performing schools, getting resources to students that are needed, initiatives with wraparound services. All of that was a strength of our past superintendent. So we're in really good shape with a lot of those initiatives. And so now, what people are saying is, "We need somebody, you know, with a focus on finance. We need somebody with a focus on sort of a management, kind of business, operations, strategic, you know, the, that kind of thing." And I, I get that, and I tend to agree with that, especially because we're going into, we just found out Monday, the proposal from our interim superintendent is for a comprehensive master plan. Could cost $2 million to have experts come in and analyze not just our buildings, but our, like, where we have property, what the projections show, what we should do about growth, redistricting, all of these issues that are more sort of logistical and more management operations. That's a huge focus for us coming, so I understand why the public, and, and I agree, like, that we, that that needs to be a focus. So I do think, I don't think there is any superintendent everywhere that checks every box. So we're not going to have somebody ever that meets every single person's criteria for what they think a superintendent should be. I think it varies based on the specific needs of the district at the time. But I do think that, you know, we're, we're in a position to attract people that have that mindset, and, and I think it'll be exciting to see how that person comes in and sort of picks up from where Superintendent Tyson is going to leave off in terms of the finance, business, operations, facilities sort of side. I mean, big picture, student success is what the ultimate goal is. And I keep, I have a list of goals that I keep with me, I have it in my bag all the time, and student success is my own first goal, and it's also the district's first goal. So the difference between the way I look at student success and the way, like, perhaps, you know, the state looks at student success is, I, I'm not looking at test scores when I say that. Test scores are important, because that's the way the state has chosen to sort of grade us on the job that we're doing. For me personally, student success is much broader than that. It has, it has to do with sort of what I mentioned, like, are we engaging the family? Are we, are we putting that student in a position where the parents know, know how to support their student? And I've learned, I'm in an education policy fellowship right now, and one of the things we've talked about a lot is that education policy is not necessarily the answer to student success, that housing policy is a big factor, healthcare policy is a big factor, juvenile justice policy is a big factor. So there are these other factors that research is showing actually might have a bigger impact on student success than just what we're doing educationally, just what we're able to do during those hours in the classroom with that kid in the classroom. We're, we're not, as a nation and as a district, making the progress that I think we've all expected we would make, given the money and initiatives that we're putting into all these programs, and our schools, especially our low-performing schools. The achievement gap is still there. And so we really need to look broader. And so I would say personally, I do try to do a lot that, of outreach to the community. I have, I have a monthly listening session with no agenda. I just go sit and listen, and I sort of listen for themes and what concerns are, and put together notes and send them to the superintendent when that's appropriate. I put out a newsletter. I try and go out into the schools. I attend all the Tucker Cluster Council meetings and the Lakeside Summit meetings. I try and have, I have part of Cross Keys as well, so I take an interpreter with me, and I have my own events in those areas. Dresden is one of my schools, and John Lewis is one of my school, my schools over there. And I try to do outreach over there and listen and try. The Latinx community has not historically had a lot of advocacy. In recent years, there's been more, but historically, that Beaufort Highway Corridor, Cross Keys, they've, it's been represented by three different school board members, and there has not, it's been hard for there to be sort of one champion for that community. A lot of those schools are 95% Spanish-speaking, and District Four, my district, goes over there. So anyway, so I try to take the view personally, with student success as my personal goal, how can I help empower parents, the community around the students, to help them be more successful during their hours in our schools? It is, it's super exciting. I drive by the site periodically and get out and walk up to the fence to see what's going on over there, because I don't think I'm supposed to go, you know, unless I have a hard hat, I don't think I'm supposed to go walking around. But it looks great. It does seem to be on schedule. It's going to be the elementary prototype that is already in place at a few different schools. Tucker leaders recently went to visit the elementary prototype at Fernbank, and they got to walk around with the principal, and the principal was very honest about, "Here's what we love about the layout and structure of this building. Here's some things to be aware of." You know, things like, "OK, you know, when sun's coming through these windows at this time, you know, just beware that there's a glare." You know, those kinds of things, so that the, the leadership in Tucker knows sort of the inside scoop on what to expect with that building. I also, I've sort of joked that it's great that that, that Tucker's elementary project within SPOST IV, because that funding is not being adjusted right now. Like, right now, we're adjusting SPOST V, but that, but SPOST IV is good and done, and, you know, that's moving forward. So it's going to be very exciting. We'll see, the, the redistricting process related to the school will start in the fall of 2020, and that's always interesting, having just gone through that in the Lakeside cluster. That's, that's going to be interesting. My guess is, it may not be as dramatic as anticipated, because the interim superintendent's plan is to do sort of more, more, she's calling it temporary, but sort of more placeholder moves, so that this comprehensive master plan that they want to, that would come out in probably the summer of 2021, that would be the big movement. Like, that would be a recommendation for probably massive redistricting, and she doesn't want kids to move twice. And she doesn't want kids to move twice. So these moves in anticipation will relieve overcrowding and get, you know, kids in, in better learning environments. But it won't be quite as dramatic if, if the board passes her plan. What comes this year, next year won't be quite as dramatic as what could come the following year.